Six oh four P M. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December third, two thousand and twenty five Select Board Meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion this evening. In person this evening, we have David Phil, Molly Keegan, myself, Randy Iser, Amy Parsons. On Zoom, we have Jane Nevin Smith. Pursuant to Chapter twenty two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty two, as amended, this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. The public has been provided with adequate alternative means of access via Zoom, as noted in the posted meeting notice, along with access and participation instructions. As Chair, I hereby notify all participants that this meeting is also being recorded by the town through Hadley Media and will be made accessible to the public. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, any person who intends to record or transmit this meeting must inform the Chair at this time. Hearing none, we'll move along. First item this evening is the Consent Agenda, item two point one. And on said Consent Agenda is one thing, the minutes from November twenty twenty, oh, two things, minutes from November fifth and November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Amy already made the motion.
Second.
Motion by Amy, second by David, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Iser?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes. Yes, can you hear me?
And Parsons?
Yes.
Did we hear Jane or not?
I'm coming back to Jane now.
There she is. Oh, she's there. She's got her thumb up.
You can't hear me? Thumbs up.
Can't hear.
Can't hear you.
She is unneeded.
I am.
Might be your microphone.
Okay, she's gonna be a watching participant, apparently. All right, moving on, item three point one, Public Comment. Is there anybody here for Public Comment? Please come up to the table, state your name and address, please.
Yes, please. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Cher Nicholas from Hatfield. I've been a resident of Hatfield for close to five decades, and I have attended your Select Board meeting in the past. I was the Hatfield Historical Rep for the three hundred and fiftieth Committee. And on November seventeenth, I attended the Halle Historical Commission Meeting to share news on my upcoming book, which I've given you a handout on, and I would like to share that with you tonight. So my book is called Divided by the Great River. It's a story of seventeenth century politics, faith, and a New England's Town incorporation at Hatfield, Massachusetts. It's a story about the families who lived along the Connecticut River at Hatfield and Hadley, mostly between the years sixteen fifty eight and sixteen seventy. It's a story about their faith, their politics, their personalities amid the first government of Massachusetts to create a new town in the Commonwealth. I tell this story through a series of seventeenth century legal petitions, court cases, meeting minutes, letters written by the families on both sides of the river. And it's an account of the effort and emotions that were part of building a new church, a town, community, and the process by which they separated in sixteen seventy. Importantly, the Massachusetts legal system between sixteen thirty and sixteen eighty six gave new rights, due process to individuals that did not exist before. These laws and statutes are incorporated in my story to tell how the Halle and Hatfield Puritans were part of the political process that developed an organic innovative system of laws, a body politic, a civil constitution for all to engage in. There are twenty-three seventeenth century images in the book, eleven legal petitions, eight of which I have transcribed, and letters written by the families in Halle and Hatfield. So I've spent four years writing this book. It's gonna be published early next spring. And during this time, I've learned who these people were, learned about their faith, their passions. And I do, you know, always say the myths about the Puritans are legend, and I hope my book dispels many of those myths. They were logical, direct, honest, a people in love with liberty. So I hope others will enjoy reading about the early Puritans of Hatfield and Halle as much as I have enjoyed getting to know them these past four years.
Thank you very much. This sounds interesting. I'm intrigued already.
Good luck with your lunch.
Pardon?
Good luck with the book launch.
Thank you so much. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for Public Comment? Anybody online? I see none. Okay, moving on. Old Business, item four point one, Fire Department, Impact Bargaining and Layoffs. Who's gonna, Mike Mason or Mike Spankable speaking?
Okay. I believe we're just here for you to do the open session vote on the approved contract from executive session. I'm not gonna, I don't think we need to review all the articles again. I just, just wanted to give you an update that the last day of their shift, as we discussed, will be December fifth, and they will be taking the layoffs through the town. So I'm working with the HR Director on that. I did want to express a special thank you to Dwight Gregoire and Max Arvidson for their service to the town of Hadley. I've brought their books of certifications, both of them are just go-getters. Just so you're aware, Dwight, and again, I'm sure they'll be picked up very quickly somewhere close, but both of them, Dwight actually started with Action with us when we first started with Action in two thousand and eighteen. He started here with us in two thousand and twenty-four in February. He received his medic in two thousand and twenty-four in June, and he has taken every emergency management program known to man, I believe, and completed his EMT Emergency Management Director Certification Program. So I wish him very much luck because he has great credentials behind him. He also is a hazmat technician. He completed that, so he's hoping to get on the state team as well. And then there's Max Arvidson. You had the opportunity to meet Max during our contracts, and this gentleman came to us on the call force in two thousand and twenty-three. He was actually living across the street and decided to join us, and it was off to the races in a matter of a year. Not only did he take the accelerated EMT Basic Program, he also took the firefighter one-two program to get his certification, and he actually received the Martin H. McNamara Award for Outstanding Student of his class, class number one twelve. He's done Fire Officer One, Fire Prevention Officer One, Fire Instructor, and he was just about, he actually requested to be part of our promotional thing to become an officer with the town of Hadley. Unfortunately, we had to put that on hold. So again, I'm gonna miss them both. Max is interested in coming back as a call force member, which I hope, I hope he will do, and I'm hoping that maybe Dwight will come back as a per diem at some point. But it's gonna be a pleasure watching these gentlemen continue on. They're gonna be leaders in the fire service, so I can't thank them enough for sharing their time with us. So that's what I have for you, so just requesting to have the vote to approve the contract.
And just so everybody out in our viewing world understands that the people you're talking about are being laid off because of our financial constraints.
That is correct. These are the two gentlemen, their lowest, according to the contract, it's the two lowest on the totem pole, basically, who have the least time. So Max Arvidson and Dwight Gregoire will be laid off beginning end of shift of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, and I think we can all probably agree with you and share your concerns that we're losing two firefighters and we really are in a, you know, that's not the greatest news to hear, but we, as we all know, have no choice in the matter at this point in time.
Yes, and I will, I will set up an appointment for you formally, just to go through where we're at, because we also don't have a deputy chief and another lieutenant. So we are working with the call force, and I can tell you right now that it is, it is a big strain right now. I am attempting to get all of our liquor licenses done with Vern on top of, I mean, so many plans are coming in. So it's, it's a challenge right now. So we're, we're doing the best we can. So folks out in TV land, if they can be patient with us, we are, we're going at as quick of a pace as we can.
We understand and we appreciate what you're doing, Mike.
Our motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Molly, second by David, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Iser?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just as a liaison to the department, I just also want to express appreciation for the work of Dwight and Max and, you know, wish them both well in their endeavors going forward. I hope they land well.
Yes. Okay, moving along, item four point two, Use of the Town Commons, Hadley Historical Commission. I see Courtney here. I assume she's gonna talk to us about this.
Hi, Courtney Meyer, Co-Chair of the Halle Historical Commission. I'm speaking on behalf of the Commission. We were asked to review the application for the use of the town commons, so I'm here to offer some of our suggestions. Most of the edits that we made to the original doc were small tweaks, semantics and such, but the biggest areas that we felt the need for more of a boost were in the fee section and for deposits in the event of damage to the common. As a commission and as residents, we want to encourage folks to use the common more like they do in other towns. It's a great space, an opportunity to build community. Speaking to the application itself, we thought Hadley residents should be able to rent out this space at no cost, so we made that suggestion in the document with the stipulation that if their event is expected to have a thousand attendees or more, we would charge them at that point. For events that are free to the public, we separated out nonprofits and for-profits with the cost being cheaper for nonprofits and higher for larger events. So for example, a gathering of fifty people organized by nonprofit would be cheaper than any PM who hosts the Asparagus Festival here. So for nonprofits, we have, should I just list what we?
Sure.
Okay, so for nonprofits, we have one to four hundred ninety-nine attendees, a hundred dollars, five hundred and nine, nine hundred ninety-nine, three hundred dollars, a thousand to one thousand four hundred ninety-nine, five, five hundred dollars, and fifteen hundred or more attendees, two thousand. And then for a nonprofit hosting free events, we have one to four hundred ninety-nine, two fifty, five hundred and nine hundred ninety-nine, five hundred, a thousand to one thousand four hundred ninety-nine, fifteen hundred, and then fifteen hundred or more attendees, two thousand dollars or more. We also want to consider the largest event that's hosted on the common currently, the Asparagus Festival, which is organized by a nonprofit, but they aren't based in Hadley, and also collect donations as admission. The town, despite, despite providing police detail and managing the influx of visitors from other town, doesn't really financially benefit from the event, so we're recommending that all events that charge admission, including those who have suggested donations at the entry, that one percent of those ticket sales are given back to the town. It's a small amount, but enough to account for the size of the event, and it would give our town a little bit of financial benefit. We're also suggesting that each renter provides a thousand dollar refundable deposit in the event that DPW needs to make any repairs to the common. In addition, we added that this deposit may be waived for Hadley residents, which will be determined based on the size of the event. Lastly, if there's, if an event charges a fee to all vendors, like they do with the Asparagus Festival, we request that at least three tables or tents are offered to nonprofits in Hadley for free, like Mothers Club, Girl Scouts, or Historical Society. So that's what we came up with.
Okay, and seeing as how this is the first time we've seen this, our policy is to take it under advisement, and we'll bring it back up at another meeting, and then we can vote on it, but anybody wanna have anything to discuss?
Ask if Scott, did you talk with Scott about the deposit if that was?
We haven't, no, no.
So the five hundred dollar deposit for the DPW does need to be increased because they use Amherst grass on the commons and is a very expensive grass seed, and I was thinking, I think is?
Armor supply.
Thank you. I was hoping he would, he's not. And so I think it's two hundred and eighty-two dollars per bag, and so that needs to go about through the deposit.
And don't we, didn't we talk about this previously? There's something about if there's damage done, then the renter, renter is responsible to pay for that?
They all are already required to have insurance, which would cover our damages. But yes, they use their deposit for, I could work with Courtney and maybe send it over to Legals to have something added in about them repairing the commons of damage.
Okay, so if you were gonna do that, would you, once you, if you revise this document at all, then you could send it to us, please? I know that we're gonna have a very busy next meeting, so it'll probably be in January till we get to revisit this and vote on it, Courtney, but I don't think anybody's gonna be renting the common between now and then.
Probably not. Thank you so much.
Anybody else on the board, all good?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Courtney.
Yeah, thanks for your work.
Okay, item four point three, Special Town Meeting Follow-Up. I requested we do this just so we can hash over how the town meeting went and what we're gonna attempt to do in the future to see what we can do to help out the town's financial situation. So Mike, did you have anything you wanted to talk about relative to that?
No, I guess what I would say is that I watched the Finance Committee meeting from earlier this week, and they either have already watched, many of several of them have already watched, or are going to be watching the initial budget presentation that Linda did at our Select Board meeting, this is the full Zoom meeting last week, to bring themselves up to speed. They had a lot of great questions. I actually watched their entire meeting, and I sent Amy an email trying to answer a whole bunch of those questions, just because a lot of the questions were questions that I had, and I worked my way around to Susan and other people, the experts in different areas, to try to get answers. And so I hope I, I got them some information. I spoke with the assessors today, and I sent an email out to the School Committee and Superintendent, as well as the Finance Committee. I sent it just to the Chairs, notifying them that they have been invited by the Select Board to our December seventeenth meeting for kind of a kickoff. It's a little unique situation. Obviously, we know why we're doing it this way. I think it's something that you should probably continue to do in the future when it's budget kickoff time, but we're doing it now just because of the severity of the financial situation. I just think everybody should be at the table, and I know you all agree. So everyone is aware, I don't know that we'll get quorums from all of the boards, but I think, you know, several of them will show up. And, you know, part of the Finance Committee meeting, if you watch it, they did have kind of a recap, a little bit of town meeting, and really just kind of focused on the, the override situation and how that, how that went. They didn't talk too, too much about the fall town meeting, where all the, you know, a lot of the capital items failed. But, you know, I think you can work that in as part of your, your discussion, and it's time to have your multi, we're gonna call it a multi-board meeting, because it's not a tri-board, it's not a bi-board, it's like five different boards, and try to get here. So everybody at the table, I think, is a good idea.
Yeah, I think we all do. Does anybody on the board have anything they'd like to say about how things went? Hearing any feedback since town meeting, thoughts for what we will do, either for the next, next attempt at an override or the next budget?
I guess my other question is, are we, if we're gonna do another override, is that gonna be based off of what FY, or FY twenty-six's budget's gonna, or what our shortfall is gonna be? Are we just picking a number, or how, how are we gonna come up with a potential override? So my suggestion is something that Linda and I have already been discussing, which is this, something that the Finance Committee astutely brought up at their meeting. If we're gonna, if the Select Board is gonna ask for another override, you need to show the public that something's different. What is different this time than last time? And I think you will be able to show them, if you choose to go down that road, you will be able to show them there is something, there are different, things that are different in what you're asking for. Number one, it will be based upon, you know, your revenue projections for FY twenty-seven, which are less than they were for twenty-six, so you're in worse shape when it comes to that. It will, it will cover the fact that your departments are likely going to have a starting point, at best, of a level-funded budget, which I don't think I've seen in the ten years that I've been chief. I don't know that any department, any Select Board guardrails have ever been, you need to level fund your budget, very different from level service. And that will be the best starting point for any of your departments. I think what you should be aiming to do is work, work towards showing the public that you are going to have a combination of changes if you're gonna ask for an override, and that will include things like budget reductions that we have already been making, efficiency adjustments where we can make them, position cuts and layoffs that we have already been making, combined with the elimination of the maintenance override request of three hundred thousand that we were asking for, and combined with a much, much reduced override request, to put it in more of a palatable ballpark. But I think the overarching goal on the Select Board side of things should be to stop the bleeding, because ultimately, what's gonna happen is this, we are going to get to a point where we're gonna hand these budgets to each one of their department heads, and each one of the department heads are going to come before the Finance Committee and the Select Board and explain the ramifications of the cuts that are about to be made. There'll be no, there'll be no other way to make the cuts, the size that we're looking at, without reducing workload, or I'm sorry, personnel. So it's gonna have to be explained by each department head. You could hear from Scott today about the struggles that he had just the last two days with the, you know, the snowplow and trying to keep the roads clear, things like that. So I guess to answer your question, David, I took like a roundabout way of doing it, but I think what, what, it needs to be less, needs to be more palatable, but it doesn't need to be a number picked out of the air. And I think that's what we're working towards right now. Linda and I are trying to put together these numbers to, to show what it is that we can do with a combination of these, these things, reductions, as well as a lesser override request, to stop the bleeding, basically.
And I would add to everything that you just said, Mike. The other thing I would add is I feel that we need to rethink how we're presenting the financial information to people. And specifically in the context, one of the things that came up on town meeting floor and, you know, out in the world's court of public opinion is, are you kidding me? It's a twenty-two million dollar budget, right? That's a big number. Like, you can't find two hundred thousand dollars in a, two, so, yeah, I wanna go back to breaking out the budget in different ways. I think people need to understand that of that twenty-two million dollars, pretty significant amount of it is fixed cost, right? So we're not playing with twenty-two million dollars. We actually only have like six or something like that to work with to affect these budget cuts. That's completely lost on most people. And, you know, again, shame on, we, we need to figure out a better way to communicate this stuff. So I'm all, I'm all about that, you know, whether it's looking at, you know, working with the, the financial management team, but looking to see what other towns have done when they've presented some of this information. I think we can do a better job there.
Yeah, it would be interesting if we could access every voter in town with all the information we'd like to get out. Sadly, it doesn't happen, and, you know, the people that come to, whether it's Special Town Meeting, about whatever, they usually don't understand the, the whole story. And that's to your point, Molly, it's very difficult to make decisions when we don't know what we're trying to decide. So I don't know how we're gonna get that information out.
This is kind of opening a can of worms, but some of the feedback that I got was, well, no, no one listens to, you know, our ideas, so to speak, of the, the townspeople, of how we can save money or, or do things. You know, it was said that we preached at them in the public forums and on town meeting floor. So what if we did call it a public forum, but more of a, just a roundtable where people can come in and say, all right, we're short one point six million dollars. Give us some ideas of how we make up that shortfall, so that way people can't say, well, you didn't give us a chance to fix your problem. And then, I mean, they're gonna have to realize that some of the ideas they're gonna throw out, that they're gonna get shot down with data that we have versus somebody that may not have it, you know, as an average voter. But I think it gives a chance for people to voice their opinions and maybe throw out some ideas that will help.
Well, I think that I agree with you a hundred percent, David. And the biggest thing that I feel is happening is that the voters think that we're five people that are making these decisions, when in reality, we are five people who are supposed to be here representing the townspeople. So why not hear from them? And, and we can hopefully get some ideas that make sense.
Jane, can you hear me?
Jane?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Excellent. So one of the things I heard was people who had been at a forum and then went to the town meeting, we answered questions that we had heard at the forum, but we didn't give the financial details at the town meeting to the people who hadn't been at the forums, and there weren't that percentage-wise, there were not that many people at forums. So I think we need to reassess what we present if we do this at a town meeting in terms of, yes, we have forums to help people understand it, but we need to, even if it sounds redundant to those who have heard it, we need to give it to everybody. Like you say, we need to give it to every taxpayer, if possible, but at least the ones that come to the meeting need to get the details.
And I think we can also leverage, I'm gonna throw, throw Alex on the spot here, but I think Alex does great work getting information out onto, you know, where people, whoever they choose to receive their information, it can go on Town of Hadley Facebook, it can go on, you know, the YouTube channel, where a lot of people do login, you know, with links from the website, whatever, and whether that's in the form of interviews or some, some other way where it's a little bit more interactive to get information out as well, I think would be a good idea. You know, kind of like we did frequently ask questions, but have it a little bit more back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of stuff, not only this, but there's so many things in this town where people don't get the information, and I don't know how we can get it out to them. If we can figure that out, I think we'd be way ahead of the game, and a lot more people would understand what's happening. But I don't know how we're gonna do that. That's gonna be a serious discussion to figure out.
But we know what the stakes are.
Yes, we do. That we do. Okay, anybody else have anything on this one?
There was one thing, I, I don't, I know you may not be ready to answer this today, but to David's point, some of the items in Fall Town Meeting which failed in Capital, some of these are non-negotiable items, they have to come back. We have to bring them back.
Yeah.
I'd love to know why they failed. To David, like I said, to David's point, I'd love to know if there's a way that folks would like to see it done differently, so that ones that we absolutely need can pass, and then they can pick and choose. I, I mean, there were technical ways to have resolved that issue. There, I just don't think folks understood the legality of removing certain, I didn't even understand it. I had that, we had that talked, I had to talk to council afterwards. So I'd love to, before annual town meeting, I'd love to at some point get some thoughts, some feedback from folks about which ones they absolutely hated and, and maybe we can do without. And, you know, we need to be able to group them in ways that town meeting doesn't take twelve hours, but also gives folks the opportunity to, uh, you know.
That was the biggest thing, people wanted them broken out.
Yeah, I, I, I'm completely fine with that. I, I, I don't, I don't know that anybody has any issues. I don't know, uh, when it was, I don't remember when it was compiled as a, as a full budget. As a department head, I loved the idea, this town meeting didn't last that long. And if I was requesting something, it was kind of grouped with other things. Um, I think we can do that with like items. I just don't know that it's a good idea to do twenty separate ones. I don't think anybody wants to, to do that. So um, a, a way to split them up reasonably, I'd love to, to know folks' thoughts on it.
Well, and I think the other thing with the capital, besides what Amy just mentioned, which is, you know, people wanting to be able to do kind of a menu, if you will. But the other side of that is there are still many people. We just do this and, and, you know, we don't always think about people in the general public, like what they understand and what they don't understand. People, oh, many, many people who are voters do not understand the difference between capital and operating. And it keeps coming up over and over and over again. So I think at the very beginning of the town meeting, just like we put up the, you know, here are the balances and all the reserve accounts, right? That's not something that we didn't used to do. And maybe, I don't know, a decade ago or something, we figured it out, like, oh, we should just put it up there. I think we should explain to people the difference between voting for this and then voting for this, because what I heard over and over again was, are you kidding me? You had this shortfall and yet you still are asking us to spend X million on, you know, you, you guys are crazy, you know, and that's obviously very different.
And to that point, why, why would we use free cash to purchase capital items? And why do we want to avoid using free cash to balance our operating budget? So again, also two very different things. So.
And I can, you also have to, um, explain the difference between, uh, paying for something within the levy and outside levy, because people don't get that at all. Your funding sources need to be, be more explained.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and to Molly's point, or everybody's point for that matter, we, that I'm gonna say, understand this, everything the best. We're trying to hold the town together from every corner. And we have people that, to Mike's point, they're interested in this, but they're not interested in that. And that may or may not be great for the town, but I think we're gonna be, have to figure out a way to get something, because if we try to do it all again, we're gonna get nothing again. And it, it, it's, uh, saddens me to think that, you know, people will be in, in, and, and not, I'm not sad that people will be in favor of the fire department, but they'll be in favor of the fire department and not something else. And this something else may be really important to keep the town together, as I said, and it'll fall by the wayside because it's not exciting or it doesn't, they don't understand. So it's gonna be a real hard battle.
All right, one more thought.
You can have as many as you'd like, Molly.
The other thing that I think everybody needs to understand that, again, I don't think we've put out there is, you know, in, in particular, some of the, the louder voices, if I can put it that way, who were against the override were hearkening back to we hired all of these, like, why do we need all these people? We didn't need them before, right? Number one, I think we can do a better job explaining roles and responsibilities across the town and what has changed. But the other thing I think it's imperative for us to do is explain, and oh, by the way, here are the things that are not getting done. Right? Because if you think that, okay, well, we don't need some of these services in the DPW or whatever, it's like, no, 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 like, there's a whole bunch of stuff that's not getting done before we even started cutting staff. And I think that word has to get out there as well. And it only comes up anecdotally when somebody asks a question, but we don't do this. And it's like, well, we haven't been able to do that for three years because we haven't had staff. So.
Well, I guarantee you that the, the capital articles that we had asked about would have been no question if we weren't asking for an override. And I think it gets lost in translation that the capital articles have already gone through like seven or eight steps before they even hit town meeting floor. They go through, um, you know, the Finance Committee, they go through us, they go through the department heads, they go through the town administrator, they go through the Capitol Committee. They, they've gone through so many steps before hitting the floor that we kind of, and they don't affect taxes. So we're just like, yeah, this is fine. You guys, you should vote on it because we've done our homework and you've elected us to trust us to do it. And, and, um, but I think if we weren't asking for an override, we wouldn't have had an issue having anything passed.
Which probably true, yeah.
Well, don't forget, part of it was our fault because, um, they did pass by majority. They just, because we lumped borrowing with non-borrowing items, it caused the entire article to have to pass by two thirds. And it didn't pass by two thirds, but the majority of the people that were in that room voted yes for all of those capital items. So again, that's on me for not breaking it up the way that it could have been broken up.
Yeah. You know, just in case people don't remember, the reason they started being lumped together was because we were swamped with complaints about how long town meeting was. And they didn't, well, didn't wanna sit there while we did each article for each, you know, fifteen thousand dollar purchase. And so that was, uh, the, this like what it already responded. So now we can swing back the other way and, and break it out. I think it's completely, you know, you gotta go at times. And unfortunately it had to involve us losing out on the items that we needed this year, but we can completely switch it back around.
We, we, having learned all these things over the years, we have to realize that even though sometimes town meeting members might be unhappy with the process, it's on us to help them understand why town meeting has to be long or whatever, because it's either that or it takes ten minutes and we get nothing. So.
Jane has her hand raised again.
Jane.
Yeah, I think that given all of this conversation, we should not um, ignore the possibility that we should present this as a two-night town meeting, so it doesn't go for six hours. We're gonna break it up at the end of this article, and then we're going to the next one tomorrow night, or however we do that. Just as a thought, I'm not saying yes, no, but I'm throwing it out there.
Yeah, once we get the warrant together, then we can make some decisions relative to that.
But the, the comments about long town meetings are totally valid for many people. And we need to consider that too. And yeah, I don't wanna come back twice, but you have choices, long meeting or come back twice.
Well, part of the process is going through the process like we do.
Right.
We can't, we can't go, it can't be a ballot vote. That's not what town meeting is. We can't, these are the, these are the articles, vote yes or no. Everybody has to have the option to discuss. So yeah, it'll be some more interesting conversations. All right, we good on that one? Okay, item four point four, snow and ice budget, public sand discussion and snow removal from sidewalks. Mr. McCarthy, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, a few meetings ago, we talked about the public sand and the problems with that. And we had a lot of calls, uh, in our office, I believe Jennifer had some too at the town hall and kind of a lot of negative feedback on that. And people really, uh, utilize that. And I, uh, did a little thinking about it. The expense part of it for the residents, I don't think is astronomical for us to, to do. It's when we're, you know, the contractors or, you know, take stealing a lot of sand from us or taking it. So I, I thought about it and, you know, I sent a couple of pictures out to David and Randy. I, I made like a little contraption there where you have to like walk into the, uh, pile, like you, you, you can't back up to it. So you can only walk into it with a bucket to, uh, get sand. And, you know, I, I, I think I'd like to ask the board to give that a try, because there is a lot of people that utilize it, even like today, you know, people are coming for a bucket of sand, whatever, and and they were the right people that were coming. I didn't see him, you know, being in the yard today, I didn't see any contractors, you know, trying to sneak in there. So maybe the word is out on that, uh, hopefully. But I just think that I, you know, I'd like to, you know, try, try it and see if we can manage this a little better.
Okay, so at the meeting he's talking about, we made a decision to shut the sand pile down, did we not?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So I think we need to revise that. If people are in agreement with what Scott's doing, I've, as he said, he sent pictures, I've seen it. I think it makes total sense. Uh, the issue we had was not with uh, the average citizen getting a bucket of sand. Uh, and if what he has done is going to eliminate the contractors and anybody backing up their pickup truck and loading it full, then I'm in favor of that.
Then, uh, I'm just gonna throw it out. Um, should we consider, uh, any sort of finer penalty if somebody is caught or, you know, I mean, I bet, I, I would hope that if you've got a truck and you can't back up any longer, that it's gonna be a deterrent enough, but.
Yeah. And like the main salt shed, we've had people just back into that also. And I mean, obviously there's no doors, whatever, style of salt, salt shed. It costs us a ton of money to put any kind of gate in front of it, whatever, but we did, you know, put a chain across it and, uh, properly post it. Uh, I, I was talking to the chief and Mitch about that. And, uh, according to, you know, what I'm told, that that's legally posted now, and somebody goes in there, they're, it's trespassing.
Yeah, except that's what I was thinking of, like a sign that basically says, you know, residential use only. You know, trespassers will be fined or, you know, something to just make it really crystal clear that you're not supposed to be doing that.
That's, that's for the sand, the sand.
Police.
Pile, sandbox. The salt shed, I think not only are they trespassing, but they are stealing. So to Molly's point, how do we police that? I mean, I know we, we can't have somebody there all the time, but if we do happen to catch somebody, it is, what does the sign say that's there now?
Uh, something about private property, like, like a, you know, a posted sign, private property per, you know, trespassing per Select Board. Uh, it's clearly marked on, uh, across on the chain and on the side and et cetera. And, uh, I know Mitch came down and looked at it and he said it was, you know, properly marked because there's a chain across it. So with the chain, you're breaking the plane, correct me if I'm wrong, like, uh, a battery, it's, it's, it's closed off area. It's not just open to the public. It's, it's closed with a chain.
So if I go there, and this is to the police chief part of you, and I take whatever, any salt out of the salt shed.
Shed.
Shed, not the sandbox.
Shed that's chained off with the signs.
If I go there and say, oh, there's nobody around, I'm gonna load my truck up with this salt. And I get caught. What are the ramifications for me in doing so?
You could be charged with trespassing and you could be charged with larceny, depending upon Scott's estimated value of that salt.
Okay. And does there have to be a, is there a threshold that we have to pass before we can get charged with larceny? Or can I get charged with larceny of five dollars?
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't. I mean, I don't, I certainly don't see us putting handcuffs on somebody like that. It'd be more of a paperwork situation.
Yeah.
You know, put the salt back and, you know, here's your date to show up in court kind of thing. So you can summon someone for any level of larceny. It only becomes a, you know, handcuffable, bolognaous offense after a certain value. I'm not sure we would. Unless you showed up with a, with a tri-axle.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we'd hit that amount.
Well, I wasn't thinking about the handcuff aspect of it. I was just thinking.
You could be charged for any amount.
Aspect of it.
Trespassing and, trespassing and general thievery.
Do you have any cameras around there?
Yes, buckets and buckets of cameras.
Tons of cameras, tons.
Lots of cameras.
Tons. So do we need to change the vote we made to shut down the sandbox?
The only thing I wanted to recommend was for the sand is if we put a limit on their, uh, what, two buckets.
Yeah, I wrote it on that sign. I don't know if you could see it, two pail limit, uh, residents only two pail limits. Yeah, just we made a little thing.
Per day, per week, per month.
Per, per.
Per time you need it, come with two pails and.
I think per day or whatever, because.
Or visit?
Yeah, per visit. Because then that prevents the people from filling their truck.
Okay.
I mean, Jane has her hand raised?
Yes, Jane.
I think we also need to make better PR about what's going on down there and say, yes, we have changed our vote. It's open to residents at two bucket a day limit, no trucks.
Hey, we need to make that vote first.
Okay, I'm that we approve changing it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll second, um, changing the policy uh, based on the recommendation from the DPW director.
Okay. So Jane made the motion, Molly seconded it, roll call vote please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
He can?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Devin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Okay. Next.
Uh, we accidentally put, uh, five point five as well. Um, but I, when I had originally made this agenda, I did put the sidewalk discussion in this one. So Randy will skip five, five when we get down to it and Scott.
Oh, he will.
Can you go for it? You can. You can talk about it, but he's gonna talk about it right now.
Yeah, I get it.
So as we discussed briefly at the, uh, last meeting and, uh, just the cost-saving aspect of things that we're trying to figure out ways to, you know, cut back on cost. And I've been striking out on that terribly, but, uh, it's just one of the things I've always thought about was, you know, the, we're doing the sidewalks, you know, removing the stone, the sidewalks. And, you know, I read you the, uh, the town bylaw and I know Mike, uh, sent it out for re-review as requested from the, uh, from legal. And I just, I, I just, I just don't know what you, you wanna try to do to, to save money, because it's just, you know, it's here's the first snowstorm, remember, you know, we hemorrhaged money again, you know, I just, every, everything costs money. And on the back end of it, there's always somebody that's not happy. I just, you can't have it both ways and just, I will gladly do whatever you want, but if, if you want cost savings, we have to kind of figure that out. I just, you know, the sidewalks, uh, uh, with this amount of snow today was three and a half hours.
So you did plow the sidewalks.
We did them today because we didn't have any, uh, yeah, ruling on this, so you didn't.
Okay. So to, uh, remind everybody, at the last meeting, there was some language in the bylaw that I was a little concerned about. So it went to town council. Town council says that the bylaw stipulates that people may not throw snow on the sidewalks and they may not leave snow on the sidewalks that has fallen naturally. So the onus is on the landowner who abuts the sidewalk to clean the sidewalk. Now we get into, we've been doing this for years. I'm plowing the sidewalks and now we're, uh, we're contemplating changing that. And here is another one of those situations where we have to get the word out somehow so that everybody understands what's going on. And I drove down Route nine today, watched Baltisar clean the new sidewalks on Russell Street with the understanding that as soon as this project is done, they will stop. And then it'll be on us to take care of it. And we're gonna, again, people need People need to be made aware well ahead of time so that they can plan accordingly. And I don't know how we do that. Short of sending everybody that is, has a sidewalk, they're laying the butts a sidewalk. Send them a letter that says you are now responsible for this.
We could do that. And I just wanna, because again, just for people who are listening, so we're talking about Middle Street. Right?
Yeah, uh, that little, that little section on uh, Bay, Middle. Uh, West, and we, we, you know, we do that section that you voted on a few years ago from East Street. To uh, Asseline. Uh, the common. Yeah, but yes, it may plow, no, sorry. Oh, yeah.
And coming soon, Route nine.
And coming soon, Route nine.
With the nine thing, if if we made the decision that the property owners are responsible for removing the snow like in most cities and. I know some of the uh, commercial snowmobile contractors are already doing it in town because I see.
I see them doing it, yeah.
But uh, if we were to make that the rule, would that absolve us from having to do the sidewalks on Route nine? Would, would it then be all the business owners be responsible for doing that?
I I believe so, yeah. And then like any areas over there, say like over the bridge or whatever, that there's no ownership. I I believe that the state's responsible for doing that, that's in there. Uh, right away, it's just like they, over the Coolidge Bridge, they do that section. There's a couple of sections that they're gonna have to.
Yeah, they do, they do stumble over the bridge.
Well, and then, then the other side of it is if we're, and by the way, I think this is the, I think this is the fourth time. That this has come in front of the select board that I can remember. And my members not so good anymore, so. Maybe more. So this isn't like Randy now.
Yeah.
Um, but when you, and I, I think part of the conversation about if we were going to make this change. We also then have to think about the enforcement side of it because it's one thing to make a rule, but if you have no teeth. Um, and I believe in other municipalities, there is a system of fines, right? I mean, right away, I'm thinking about some properties along Route nine in particular, where there are likely. Abutting property owners. If you just look at the property itself, you can rest assured they're not likely going to be. Making the effort to shovel the sidewalks. So I would think that there has to be. Something punitive. That can be enforced.
Yes.
Yeah, so um. Because chapter forty, section twenty-one D, um, allows for a noncriminal disposition. So basically a fine citation. Uh, from the building commissioner or the commissioner's designee. So the DPW director could be. Uh, could be uh. Sidewalk police or whatever, or they could, you know, do it in combination with one another. I think I would have to pull up the bylaw to see what the fine is.
Yeah, usually it's like of, I would like a warning, you know, an initial warning and then. Fifty dollars and then it becomes like a daily thing to the extent people don't clear it.
And Jane has her hand raised again.
Yeah, okay, Jane.
So the town owns the property where the sidewalks are on West Street. So who's the owner? Just when I lived on West Street, the town owned the sidewalks and out to the street because they have a really wide right of way on that street. And that's probably true on Middle Street too. So you, we may be getting into a problem. Of figuring out, you know, are we gonna find ourselves for not plowing our sidewalks? Are we gonna ask people? I mean, we already asked those people to maintain the lawns and everything else on that property. So, and different section, same, same message. Those are the older places in town where more of the seniors live. Some of them are changing hands now. But mostly there are seniors in those houses who are no longer able to shovel snow and some of them. May not financially be able to hire someone to shovel snow. And if it's on town property, that's a conundrum.
Well, I think Jane, to help you understand a little bit, all sidewalks in this town are on town property. There are no sidewalks on private property. Because then we'd have to have an easement over it. Uh, so. Um, I guess, but I understand what you're asking and. I would assume that town council knows this when they reviewed this, but we can certainly.
Double check.
Double check.
Well, what it, what the bylaw, what what the bylaw says and what town council's opinion says is that. Uh, no owner or tenant of an estate abutting the sidewalk. So essentially even though the town may own that property. It's essentially the abutting portion of property that goes up against it. And the penalties, uh, as Molly said, are increasing. I did find them. First violation is a hundred. Second is two hundred, third is three hundred and um, I believe. I haven't gotten to it yet, but I know that when the police department issues. Noncriminal dispositions, if they're not paid by, in a certain period of time, they actually can turn criminal. Uh, I think that's probably the way to do something. But um, yeah, I believe it's a budding and and. I guess what I would say, Scott and I have talked about this multiple times. It's a good point, Jane, in that some folks can't do it. And they might be those same folks who can't afford to have someone else do it. And I think that's completely understandable. I don't think Scott is saying that he can't do it. We can do it.
Right.
But we can barely do it with the people that we have now and what we're looking at for the future. Likely means less people all around town, so there will be less people to do it. Um, these are all the things that we have been suggesting we're heading towards with this financial thing. And Scott was, is trying to find a way to. Begin to resolve this issue before we get into it.
And you said it took three and a half hours to do that. What kind of money does that equate to? Uh, labor and equipment roughly?
It's two grand at least.
Yeah, a couple thousand dollars. I mean, whatever you price your equipment on it too, it's another, a few thousand dollars.
For discussion purposes, we'll call it two thousand dollars.
Well, and this is this. Add three more hours for Route nine in about a year.
Yeah, that, that'll, and and that's.
And I think, you know, in fairness, when we're, and by the way, disclosure, I am a property owner who would be affected by this. Okay. We've hired somebody to plow the driveway and they shovel the walk from, you know, so now I'm gonna have to say, okay, well, guess what? Now you gotta pick this up too. It's gonna cost more money, so I get it. Um, but I think. You know, we only have so many DPW dollars to go around and now we're, we're talking about a. Select group of property owners who get this benefit, right? So in my mind, if I'm weighing, do we want to delay or, or, you know. Delay sending all of the plow trucks out to wait for a storm to get to a certain point like other. Neighboring communities do, um, to save money. It's gonna affect pretty much everybody. Or do we look at something that's impacting a, a smaller, you know. A smaller group of property owners who are benefiting from it. Um, you know, again, I, I know here what Jane's saying, but I, but I also know. In neighborhoods, there are people who go over and help the neighbors shovel and all of that stuff too. So I would hope as a community, if you know somebody. Is elderly and they can't shovel the walk, may, maybe there's a nice neighbor who's gonna pitch in and help out, you know, for something like this. Um.
Community service hours.
So I'm, I, I don't like it, but here we are. I mean, these are the things that we have to start thinking about, so I'm, I'm.
In, in like.
Willing to do this.
And this was, you know, three and a half hours on whatever. We had four inches of snow. It wasn't. A foot or more, which, you know, just compounds the time. It's, and you know, like today, for instance, you know. We're kind of under the gun to get this done for, for school opening. And I don't know how the parents would feel if we uh, said. You know, two hour delay, the sidewalks aren't done or, you know, no school, we gotta still plow the parking lots, whatever. We had everything. Ready to, to go for, you know, school opening was on time or whatever. I know that's a, can be a. Huge burden on people to find childcare for snow days and all that stuff that goes along with that and just. Everything comes with a price and we're just, you know, we were, we're asked to, to cut back and just how? We, we, we tried somewhat delaying the plowing yesterday. I don't know what areas you live in, but. Doing so was more taxing for us to plow because the snow got wet and heavy and it's just. More abuses on, on the equipment. And so, okay, so we saved a little bit on manpower, but. What, what do we wreck on the other side? And you know, what, what's gonna, where else, more prematurely, it's just uh. The trickle, the ripple effect of this is, just keeps going.
So remind me to come back to the sidewalk thing. Like Jane wants to say something. Jane?
Yeah, in this whole discussion, I wanna thank Scott for the, the way he managed to get everything cleared today for the snowstorm. And his crew.
Yep, they did an outstanding job as usual. Now to get back to, to what you said about the school thing, Scott. The, our bylaw says you gotta get the snow out within twelve hours, I think. So that's gonna mess up. Potentially every, even if somebody complies.
Right.
They maybe wait till they get home from work.
Right.
This afternoon and the sidewalks covered in snow, so.
Kids have boots, right?
Oh, yeah, I know.
Even when you plow the sidewalk, they walk next to the sidewalk in the snow when you're.
Because it's more fun.
Okay, well, that's just stuff to think about.
I guess, I guess it just puts the responsibility on someone else that we're doing it, so we just.
Yeah.
To make sure it's ready for potential walkers.
I mean, my biggest thing is um, getting ahead of the Route nine sidewalks because that's gonna be a mess. And with telephone poles and signs and everything else in the middle of the sidewalk, the way they did it, it's not like you could run a snow blower down there or a. Little V plow or something like that, so.
Even next to the side of the town hall, we have to. Yeah, there's, yeah, we can't get around it. So you gotta do handwork there, so.
So I would say, my opinion, send out a letter to all the sidewalk abutters saying, hey, January first. We're enforcing this bylaw and there'll be penalties. Warning and then penalties for not following the bylaw and, you know, it's been on the books and due to our financial constraints, the, you know, whatever.
Right.
But I think it's gotta go out in the mail though.
Yeah, I agree with that. Is January first a little too soon? Because it's, you know, by the time they get a letter, we get a letter together, they get it. It's gonna be at least another week. So like, and it's Christmas and all that, it's, so I, I agree with you, but I think we need to give them a little more time.
Yeah.
All right, February first then, that's, that's fine.
And can we do it? Can, oh no, because we don't wanna wait that long. Never mind, never mind. I was gonna say stuff it with the bills, we don't have to wait.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion for this to happen?
I'll second, I'll second motion.
I'll make it up.
Okay, I'll second David's motion.
Okay, motion by David, second by Molly, roll call vote please.
Roll call vote Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes. Do we wanna get the folks who are here to be saying that?
Um, I suppose since Scott's sitting up there, you, you have anything else, Scott?
Uh, Scott, I can take care of the water. Randy and I can take care of the water regulations discussion.
And sidewalk by law, but we're.
Did table that, that's.
Yeah, right, I get that. So I think we have, we have people here for a water and sewer abatement request.
Yep.
We might as well take that out of order so that they can.
Okay.
Not spend the rest of the night here. I'm sure they're having the time of their life, but.
Uh, there was a request made again for the second time for two thirty-three Russell Street for a water abatement. Uh, I forgot to ask Jennifer the date of the last uh, request, but uh, the previous one was rejected by the. The board and, you know, my decision hasn't changed at all and I, I'm hoping you read my explanation. If you want me to read it, I can, but uh, you know, obviously the water department worked with these folks. The resolve this issue. We did multiple data logs, double track and make sure the leak was fixed. Uh, they ended up finding a, some kind of rogue line going out to the back that was the cause of the, the major leak. So that was shut off first and then a toilet was found leaking and uh, I know, uh. Believe one of the water guys worked with the resident and a plumber to get that resolved and we. We did a few data logs on it and there is no leaks currently. So I think we did our due diligence to. Help these folks out with their remedying the leak, but obviously the water did go through the meter and into the sewer system. So nothing has changed with that.
Okay, and we have an amount here that we're asking for an abatement? I don't see that.
They did not submit a, a request amount.
Bill amount was twenty-six seventy-five fifty-three, it's due December first.
Was that paid?
I don't, you pay your bill on the first? No, no, it's okay. I just need to know, did you pay your bill on December first? Could you pay this bill? It was due this day? Have you paid it? I don't believe they have.
Okay.
Cause it's, it's, it's right here. It's the two thousand six hundred seventy-five.
Okay, that's what we have.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it's been three months. Uh, that, the course, they uh, they already hear the bill. They, three months from. Yeah, one thousand nine hundred seventy-four thirty-one. That's what three months. And now after from September to November, two thousand six hundred. Something, that's why it, she want to know, don't know the leaking somewhere, it's so expensive water. Because she don't know the water, just three people live.
Yes, maybe you need to direct it to them. They, they are the central town, I just, I work with them. No, 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 it's okay. I'm just saying, I can't, I can't.
We've seen all this, correct?
Yes.
This the old bill, she pay. This not pay yet. That's why she want to know why the three month of water, a two thousand something dollar. Need on the days of service.
Yeah, and there was also a rate increase in the place.
Right, looks like August first, so the month of August was nineteen hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Yeah, that's why she pay already done.
Was that the first abatement? Was there?
Twenty eighth was when the first abatement came through, that was denied.
Okay, and then, but then something was done to fix, but not until November.
Not, no, no, so. When, when, when the first, when they came to, with us to the town for the first abatement. We immediately went out there uh, to investigate this leak.
In August?
Yes.
In August.
Yes. Uh, the guy, the guys found a pipe heading out the rear tongue. God only knows what that was leaking. They, they shut a valve off and stopped that leak. And there was still another leak in the home. So the guys worked with the, the residents. And we started with toilet tabs and we found a leaking toilet. So uh, this was. One of the water workers helped the resident get ahold of a plumber and. Uh, explained to the plumber, yes, that these folks have a, a leaking toilet. It's leaking pretty bad. They need a plumber to come here and fix it. And, and, and it was resolved. And after that, periodically, we were going there. Data logging the meter, verifying that there was no abnormal usage or any leaks. And everything has been uh, you know, holding a, a good course now that. There's no ups and downs, so the leaks have been fixed. But in August, or prior to August, there was a major leak there. That's why the bill was so high.
So this is covered up to September, whatever, twenty-something, so.
Yeah.
And it would, would if this bill that was due December first, would have gone to August and September.
Oh, I see, so the.
It's in arrears.
It's in arrears.
Right, it's in arrears.
So the next bill is when they would see it go down.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you got nothing.
Like I said, we have been out there a few times communicating with the residents that everything is good. Uh, and there's no, no leak. So your, your water bill should be, you know, at a normal usage.
Yeah. The next, the next one should be good. It's just because this happened, like you get billed for like the three months prior.
Correct.
Yeah. So it won't be until the February bill, February, February billing.
February bill.
Then they'll see the reduction. And sue if they need to do like a payment plan of some kind.
I believe that one was already paid.
Part, well, it looks like part of it.
Well, part one was, and I think there's still a two thousand dollar balance there.
Eight-six hundred.
Twenty-six?
Yeah.
I mean, I, with interest of fifteen dollars.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, yeah.
Yeah.
If, if that was requested. Yes. Yeah, okay.
And we've had a couple of rather substantial requests for water abatements in the recent past, which were all denied. And we did work out payment plans. So I, I don't see how we can accept this request personally.
Yeah, because it went through the meter.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, she say because now she cannot talk to Jane like that a lot because she don't have my money. You can uh, they call for her very bad.
They, they said they will make a payment plan for her. The collector's office will uh, help you uh, come up with a payment. That, that's at the, that's at the town hall. Uh, Susan's in behind us is the person you need to talk to. The pipe outside, yes, yeah. Yeah, in the ground. Yeah, that's the pipe that, that whatever happened broke and it was leaking water through. That, that, that's, that's the one that the, the guys helped you shut off. It's off now. It's no longer leaking.
Yeah. Use the water, but the water that leaking they go outside.
Yeah, but it, it went through the plumbing of the house and it went through the water meter. Unfortunately, anything after the water meter isn't our responsibility. That's up to the homeowner to uh, maintain and you know, uh, make sure it's in good working condition.
She said she don't use the water, but the water, the leaking, they go outside. That's why she don't want, uh, the one you for waters not fit.
Yeah, but it, it, it went through the water meter because that pipe is connected inside the house. Wherever it went out into the yard or whatever, uh, hasn't been determined. All, all we did was shut it off. But it went through the plumbing of your home, whatever somebody did prior to you having that home. If they had animals or something out in the back, they, you're putting water to or whatever. That's, you know, not our responsibility to uh, maintain.
I could make a motion to deny it, maybe.
Hang on just a minute and. I agree. This is a little long forever. We gotta be careful here. No, that's across the street.
Say maybe the.
That's on the even side.
But don't tell.
Oh, okay.
No, we don't, we don't know that information until the, we, we don't have any kind of technology to randomly tech, check for leaks or anything of that nature. Just we read the water meters and you get the bill and, and uh, you know, that's it. Unfortunately, you know, I guess as a homeowner, you have to be somewhat uh, vigilant of uh, you know, your infrastructure of your home.
Yeah. So again, you know, I um, gonna make a motion to deny the abatement request. But we, you know, again, want to work with you to help it get, help you pay it in installments or whatever will work for you. Um, and then again, if the next bill, you should see it dramatically decrease. Sarah, second?
Second. Okay. So Molly made a motion to deny the abatement. So can you tell her we understand exactly what she's saying?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the way the system works, we cannot help with the abatement because the water went through her house. And so she is financially responsible, but we will, the collector will work with her so that she doesn't have to pay it all at once. Okay, thank you very much. Molly made a motion to deny. David seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Ed Parsons?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. The, the abatement has been denied. She's gonna have to pay it.
Jennifer, can I ask that you send that to uh, Jennifer in, you know, the proper.
System two.
Yeah, just. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are all yours.
Right, right, yeah.
All right, now where did, what happened to me here?
Spirit. Collector update.
Susan.
Oh, I lost my, I lost my place. I, I don't know what's going on here.
Oh, no, collector.
Five point one, Susan. Collector update.
Okay, collector update. Item five point one under new business. Please, Sue, come on up.
She's got to, you're bringing gifts?
Well, this has to do with. The second card.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
So I only have good news for you tonight. So um, I think you all know our tax rate has been set. Uh, eleven dollars and forty-six cents because our values went up a little bit, so the tax rate went down some. Um, right now, we're a little busy because Cheryl is doing uh, the data bridge so that we can get our bills out by December thirty-first. Um, I will then add the liens, we'll do the conversion and they'll be mailed by Christmas Eve. Oh, oh, oh.
You don't look like Santa.
Yeah, well, and I'll be honest with you. The reason I do it is because so many people want to pay their tax bills prior to uh, December thirty-first. So they take a tax advantage. So that's why they go out. They're not due until uh, February, I think it's February third this year. Um, so our year ending twenty twenty-five uh, on June thirtieth. When I look to see how, how we've done as far as collections go, I look at what's outstanding on June thirtieth for real estate, personal property and CPA. Um, we always shoot for under a hundred thousand dollars. This year we were at seventy-six thousand one thirty-five. So we did that.
Uncollected amount?
That was uncollected.
On sixteen million.
On, yep, uh, fifteen six ninety-two. Yeah, so um, and then I look at the amount that we actually turn over to the treasurer uh, when we do our tax titles, which we just did our tax titles November fourteenth. Uh, and that amount was ten thousand one thirty-six. So that leaves us with an effective collection rate of ninety-nine point five one percent.
Very nice.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah. Um, so the other thing that um, that I track every year, but I, I don't tell you folks about it all that much is the motor vehicle. And the reason I mention it is because we will probably in twenty twenty-five, we will bill um, probably a million dollars, just a little over a million dollars in motor vehicle excise. And that's a benchmark for us. Um, right now we're at nine ninety-seven, three fifty-six, but we still have one commitment left that will encompass anything bought from October to December. Um, so I think we'll hit that million dollar mark. Um, now with that said, I kind of think that we saw an increase because um, people were buying new vehicles because of the tariffs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that may not happen again, but it did this year and uh, yeah, exactly. Um, and through today, we had thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars outstanding on excise, which gives us a collection rate of ninety-nine point eight-eight percent. So um.
Turn around.
Yeah, I thought somebody was gonna throw something at me when I said turn around. Um, the other news is we have, uh, we are rolling out um, a new online collection portal. Um, yeah, I, I think everybody will be happy with this. Um, it is through our collection system, our Vadar collection system. Um, Unibank, if you did not always pay your bill on Unibank, um, and so say you dropped off a water bill in my office two weeks ago and you go online to Unibank, it, it will still show that your water account is past or still do. Um, this will be live, so it will, it will be updated at eleven fifty-nine every night. So if you go in one day and, and then go in the next day, you'll see your payment has been made. Um, it also allows you to check what you've paid for the year. Um, it will also do a bill presentment, so you can actually get a picture of your bill, um, which I think will be a cost-saving measure for us because we get tons of, I can't find my bill.
Applying for a mortgage.
Exactly, all of that stuff. Um, so um, we're, we're very excited. I had hoped to have um, some uh, marketing materials uh, for tonight, but they haven't gotten here yet. Um, because the mail is great. So um, but I'm, I'm hoping they still come in before Citizens Academy tomorrow night. Because uh, I'm very excited about it. And uh, we, we will put an insert in all of our real estate bills so that everybody is aware of this going forward. Um, so that's it as far as the collector's office. Risk management wise, um, I was able to negotiate a two-year deal with Maya that will lock us in at a zero percent rate increase for the upcoming twenty-seven and a two and a half percent increase for twenty-eight.
These are the.
And that's big. That's big. Um, because uh, I, I expected somewhere between fourteen and eighteen percent increase coming this year just because of reinsurance.
That's great. And then again, just for the viewing on it, this is not the medical.
No, it's not health insurance. It's property and casualty insurance. Yeah.
Which is, that's outstanding.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that ends up being, I don't know, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. So it's uh.
And I hope you don't mind, but you were playing cop that day, so I signed on your behalf. Yeah, I don't mind.
I'm so sorry.
I don't.
He was actually in a patrol car. But so that's all I have on that.
Well, it's nice to get a little bit of good news now again.
Well, yeah, well, I, I offered to let him give the insurance as good news from.
You did it.
The town administrator's standpoint. You have, you have little, you and far between, so.
I have one question for the new payment portal. Um, is there a way to opt out of a paper bill on there? So we'd have to send them out.
There isn't. There isn't. Um, and that's mostly a state requirement. So. Yeah. I'll still send you a paper. Sorry. Um, so the other thing that I am on your agenda for.
Okay, hang on.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so we're done with item five point one. I don't want anybody to get confused here. Now we're moving on to item five point two, collector documents donation. Yes, that's what that box is for?
Yeah, so this was found in the basement in an old vault in a box that was not as good as this one. Um, and these are all um, from the Court of Insolvency. So these are essentially tax title documents from a very, very long time ago. And I'm afraid to really touch them. Um, and so my thought was, uh, does the board, would the board like to, we're no longer required to keep them, but I thought you might like to donate them to the Historical Society.
I believe that's a grand idea.
Yes.
Oh, and I'll be honest with you, Amy. I'm afraid to open them. Because they're, I mean. This is really.
They're super cool.
They're all handwritten and that's how everything.
My hands are so dry. There's not.
So, but I mean, they're really, they're really kind of cool.
Yeah, I've never heard of Court of Insolvency.
Yeah.
So that's gotta be.
Insolvent debtor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was pretty cool.
Let's see, how scared can I be?
Well, and there's a. I was afraid.
I won't go over the top, which is corn, but I'm gonna try.
But I will.
Try to be good.
And I won't say the name out loud.
Oh, there's.
But there, there were two in here that I had had in tax title. They were ancestors.
You're that, you're that old?
Wow, yeah, this, but this are citations.
So, so we issue essentially a warrant to collect. That's where the old warrant thing that you guys sign came from.
A one thousand, a year, one thousand eight hundred and forty.
Okay.
Eighteen forty.
So.
Said to this one. I'm sure there's older stuff.
The ink is from the Netherlands.
There you go.
Yeah, I don't think this is gonna do us any good to keep it in town hall and people.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know that we can let people actually look at it unless we can preserve it somehow.
Yeah.
But I think would be cool. This kind of stuff is really interesting.
I thought the Historical Society.
Well, and.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to uh, donate those documents to the Historical Society.
Okay, motion by David, second by Molly. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for that. Sue, who found those?
Um, I'm not certain, but they were like, oh, we're gonna dump these. And the box was like.
Really?
These decrepit, yeah. And I was like, whoa, 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 I know what these are.
The basement.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'm not certain. It'd be nice if we found money.
That'd be really nice.
Luck with that. Okay. Yeah, I think it's there. Wish you'd probably charge him that for the, the most things. All right, so that was item, now next up, item five point three, twenty twenty-six license renewals. And Jennifer, tell us about this, please.
Absolutely. Uh, it is renewal time. Uh, I have a completed Excel sheet here for you. I broke it down by license type. Uh, everybody who is on the list is up to date with their licenses. We will have another batch coming. I'm gonna just go ahead and say if this is lower than I've, I've collected in the past. We've lost some businesses this year and last year, so it's really starting to, to impact a bit. Also, I've had a couple of businesses ask me if they could pay at the end of the year. Their money's tight, this is a concern. And technically how y'all's bylaws, not bylaw, your policy is on this, is the late fee does not take effect till December thirty first. So I, I saw no harm.
Okay, and this is just, the, there's no used card licenses in here, right?
No, there are.
On them by every sheet.
Yeah.
Every category now.
Oh, down at the bottom, I see it now.
And so if you wanted to abstain from that one second, that would be.
You'll ask people.
Okay.
So, so you need a motion for each individual one spot? So I would like to make a motion that we approve the common victular licenses for twenty twenty six. As presented on this list.
Okay, motion by Amy, second by David, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor licenses or the alcohol licenses. For the upcoming year for twenty twenty six for the presented businesses in this.
Question? Jane?
Didn't the Young Men's Club change their name?
The Young Men's Club did not change their name with the ABB, ABCC or myself. Nor does their application show like name change. I did perhaps notice they're using the club, but they have not officially changed anything.
So is that like a DBA or something?
They have not done that paperwork with me.
So according to what Jennifer has, Young Men's Club of Hadley Inc. is correct.
Second.
Who made the motion? Amy, motion by Amy, second by David. Roll call vote, please.
Quick question.
Okay, hang on.
You know, I was just wondering if any of these businesses had taken advantage of the liquor license changes.
No, I, I honestly, I'd had a couple of people ask me for them, but nobody has submitted an application yet. That being said. Officially, they're just not allowed to. I think the AT just got back to us. So I, I would, I would imagine if he was gonna do it, it'll be January, February. This is a busy time for. Most of them.
Okay.
Set. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Roll call Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yep. Thank you. Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the class one and two auto dealers. Licenses for the upcoming year of twenty twenty six as presented in the Excel sheet.
Second.
Okay, motion by Amy, second by David. I will be abstaining from the Spruce Hill Motors. Business on this as it's mine, and I will vote for the other ones. Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Roll call, roll call by Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the entertainment licenses for twenty twenty six as presented in the Excel sheet.
Second.
Motion by Amy, second by David, roll call vote, please.
Roll call by Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the automatic amusements licenses for twenty twenty six as presented in the Excel sheet.
Second.
Motion by Amy, second by David, roll call vote, please.
Roll call by Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes. I would like to. Make a motion to approve the theater plus skating rink.
It, it's sort of a general license. It's theaters and skating rinks.
Okay.
If it's not a license together, it's two separate licenses. I just put them together because they're so cute.
As presented for twenty twenty six.
Motion by Amy, second by David, roll call vote, please.
Roll call by Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's that. We did the water abatement, the sidewalk bylaw, we don't need to discuss. Item five point six, Asparagus Festival.
We have a later meeting, passover.
I, I just added that in there. They asked for us to delay.
Okay. We can do that. Item five point seven, Water Regulations Working Group Creation. Who wants to tell us about this?
I can explain that. So. I am new to water regulations and discussion of how these things work. But in the short time, well, I guess the long time, in the interim. A few different. Issues have come up which have required some discussion. And each time these issues have come up, the problem has. Circled back to the fact that. Our water regulations say one thing, but it allows for interpretation. And it's becoming a problem because it puts the DPW director in a tough spot in that he's forced to either. Deny certain requests and have to contend with. The person who's making the application say, well, you allowed it on X or. The past DPW director or the select board, the water commissioners, which are you. Have allowed it in these different areas. So my suggestion was, why don't we go through the water regulations and make some adjustments? To make them make more sense, remove any conflicting information and also include the fact that. You know, certain, certain places. We can allow certain things and certain places we can't and allow for some discretion to the DPW director. Randy, you go ahead.
I just wanna make sure everybody understands this is basically for water tie-in situations, correct?
Well, there's different spots and regulations that are kind of. Like Mike said, the interpretation is kind of loose. I think we need to make it a little clearer.
The issue arose for, from water tie-ins and then when Tony, Tony Horton is our what chief water operator. When I spoke with him about it, he was, he was, he's concerned about a few different places within the water regs that. Outdated conflicting information, things that could be tightened up. So. My proposal would be to create a working group. Consisting of who, whoever you wish, I put some suggested folks in here. To review the water regulations and then bring forth any potential recommended changes. To you folks as the water commissioners. Because I don't think that they have been reviewed for quite a long time.
The only thing I would say is take the town administrator off that list because it needs to come to us for approval anyways. And I think you've got enough on your plate without another meeting to sit into.
Love that idea. I think the other folks who were at the meetings that we have, we have had in, in the recent past. And they all have really good input. Perhaps, I don't know, if building makes sense to be on there, I, I don't know. Do they have anything to do with it? No?
Uh, no. So I'd say I didn't pay attention to your lists, you know, what you have.
So I have fire chief, DPW director, a member of the water department, obviously, you know, of your choosing and makes, probably makes sense to have the chief. And a member of the planning board and. If you wanted to have select board member on there, you could, but again, to David's point. You are gonna be making the decisions. To accept these regulations, so it might make more sense to stay out of it until it's time.
Would it even make sense to have the planning board member? Because I mean, it's.
From a. Situational standpoint? Like, wouldn't they be aware of circumstances that have come up?
Right, and they're involved at the end of the line, so to speak. At one of these meetings that Mike Mason's talking about. Jimmy Max was there because the planning board approved something. And I think it would behoove them to understand what's going on. So I think it's a good idea. If, if it's Jimmy Max is gonna be the one who does it, and I, I think he would be, he is knowledgeable about all this stuff. He's been on the board for. Centuries. And I think that he would be a good one to just. Look, look at this stuff and, and offer suggestions. I don't have a problem with that. And it doesn't need to be an even or odd amount. It's not like they're gonna vote on anything. Other than making suggestions to us, so.
That's, that's one of the reasons why I would want a working group. We just want discussion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
No, I just, I don't wanna. Susan, just, I know she got on yet, but she asked if she could, you know, her, Kim, something from the collector's office. Sue said that she knows a lot about. You know, she has good regs in her office and et cetera. And in, in my office, Jennifer Stewart, that has a lot of interaction with the. Outside, asked if she could be there, just, I don't know, to kind of listen to see what potential changes could go either way. So she says, when somebody calls. She like, she doesn't like to tell people, we'll call you back. She tries to give answers right away. So that's.
So we could probably make a motion to create this group and let the town administrator. Choose the members. If that's okay with him. If getting him off the, the.
That's a good trait to me.
Okay. That, that work, David?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to create this working group for the length of the project. And to be made up of, of membership as determined by the town administrator.
Motion by David, second by Amy. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call by Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Okay. Scott, are you here for anything else?
Oh, the next one, the water and sewer rate discussion, I'm not sure. That was just the reminder.
That's got to do with.
Clarification.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with you, so.
Can, can we, can I just say something on the water and sewer rate? Just because it's kind of.
Okay, so hang on one second. Next up is item five point eight, Water and Sewer Rate Discussion. Mr. McCarthy.
So yeah, I just wanted to, you know, say that, you know, the, the last bill, you know, was. Your, our last voted rate went into effect and. I know our office was bombarded by calls with high water bills. And to the point like we thought something was wrong with the rate. We were getting that many phone calls from people about bill was in. All of them were leaks that people had, but now that the rate has gone up. Substantially, people not really noticed that. And I know in the collector's office, they got a lot of calls. Well, I didn't know the rates were going up and all this other stuff. So I just don't know, like in the future. With the, I don't know, the bill that goes out before the rate increase, maybe if you, we could put some kind of notice in here, just. FYI, the next one is going up to.
That's a good idea.
X. Dollars because it just, you know, it, it went up, it went up a bit. So people were really calling, you know, and et cetera, but.
Yeah, we all got water bills.
Yeah.
Point frankly, Scott, that is the exact reason why I wanted this on here, so that we could. Discuss exactly what you just said. We, this is another one of those issues where we need to give advance notice. I mean, the decision was made however many months ago, and we all assume that people know. And this, to expect it coming, and they don't. So how do we get out in front of that? And is there enough time? Is there a previous water bill that could be sent? So that they would have the advance notice? Is, is there enough time to do that?
Well, Sue's on here. But we can also bring that answer back to you.
Sue could, Sue, Sue, can you answer that question, please?
She hadn't muted yet, so that's why I thought maybe we might.
There we go.
So I don't know what you mean by. Do something with a previous water bill.
All right, so remind me when we voted on the water rate.
June eighteenth.
June eighteenth. When did the next water bill? Was there an old rate water bill that went out before the new rate took effect?
It did August first.
Okay, so my question is, can we in the future, put a notice in that bill saying, guess what? Your water bill, the rates got voted to increase to whatever they are, and on your next bill, December first, whatever it is. You're going to see an increase. So that you guys don't get bombarded, Scott doesn't get bombarded. And we don't get accused of trying to recover money from no override because. We, we made this up after, I mean, we voted on it well before the override, but we still get accused of. Trying to get back at people because the override didn't pass.
Yeah, I, that's not a problem. I, I will just, I, I will also say that inserts in water bills. They're never paid attention to, so we'll probably still have the same thing happen. But that's fine. I don't have a problem doing that.
Okay, thank you. And that, that's all I had on that. Anybody else have any?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're sorry?
Well, just, just quickly, just related to water. I've just. In the spirit of just positive news, I shared with Mike and Scott over the weekend. That I happened to be sitting, having dinner and I overheard a gentleman nearby. Literally ask the waitress, excuse me, can you tell me where this water came from? Is it bottled water? Which I thought was just an interesting question. She was like, no, it's tap water. It was a Hadley establishment. And so he said, you're kidding. This is the best water I've ever had. So I couldn't help myself. I'm like, excuse me. I'm on the select board and I just overheard you. So thank you so much. And I, but I said to him, I'm just, it's kind of surprised you noticed. And he said he lived in another town in Hampshire County that should be, remain nameless. And he said. You know, it's, it comes out of the tap and he said, it's, it's awful, it's overpowering. And he said, I can't believe you get to drink this every day. So I just wanted. Maybe our residents don't always appreciate the work that you guys do at the water department, but please.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was kind of speechless when you sent that out because usually it's, it's something totally different, you know, Scott. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item five point nine, Hazard Mitigation Work Group, which mentions Chief Spankable who was here.
Yeah, I, I, I disappeared. He's, yeah, he had to go to a crash and he's had a long couple of days, just like, just like Scott has. So I told him. He and I have spoken about this, so I can handle this for him. I'm also on this committee anyways, so. We have a hazard mitigation committee that we have just begun meeting. Every couple of weeks, I think, to update the hazard mitigation plan. We would like for this to be reduced. From an official committee to a working group, just like the suit, the water regulations working group. It, there is, the, the, the things that we are discussing right now will all be brought back to the select board for your. Assent and decision, it will all be made public, but publicly posting these meetings and trying to find a location where it's appropriately. Accessible and all that is becoming very difficult. So. Mike brought to me the request to simply just drop this down a notch from an official committee. To a working group and then we will bring any and all recommendations back for the board when we're done.
And this is just, it's updating the existing. Hazard mitigation plan, and we're required to do that. Correct by whatever entity. And I've been to one or two of the meetings and it's. Nothing glorious. And I, what, what you just said, Mike, makes sense to me.
Make a motion to change the Hazard Mitigation Committee to a Hazard Mitigation Group.
Second?
Motion by David, second by Amy, roll call vote, please. Second, motion by David, second by Amy, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nevinson?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Scotts, thank you.
Just quick question. I'm just, to my knowledge, the previous committee members, which should now be work group members, it's internal personnel only. Is that right?
The
I think
It's all internal personnel. Um, I think there is a retired member on the committee. Recently retired. Other than that, it's either internal personnel or certainly Hadley, Hadley residents, I guess.
Okay. Item five point ten, Hadley Media Funding. Anybody from Hadley Media here?
No.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Lamarche.
Mr. Isaac, how are we doing today?
Very well. How about yourself?
Doing okay.
How can we help you, sir?
Yeah, so I, I just wanna bring attention um, a little more to our, um, our, our issue of funding. Um, I do have one update for you since I uh, wrote this letter back in October. Our House Bill is now in the Ways and Means. So it's moving along legislative session quicker than last, than the last three sessions. Um, so that's some good news, but it's still worked ahead. Um, just wanna point out a few things here. Um, what we're seeing, what I've been seeing in, uh, in other things, uh, like um, October thirty first, Spectrum reported that they're good, they lost a hundred and nine thousand subscribers last quarter.
Um, hundred and nine thousand?
Hundred and nine thousand.
Okay.
And that's not in Hadley, that's nationwide.
Hope not.
Um, no, we have about, since last year, we have about nine hundred as in, at the end, as of in the net last year. Um, uh, and it's speaking that we, we see the decrease every year, um, even though um, we have enterprise fund. Uh, we can't control the rates like water and sewer. Um, we, we, we negotiate a license every ten years and charter um, dictates all those rates. We have no say in the rates at all. Um, and we, we've hit significant growth um, on our, on our YouTube channel. We've hit, as you know, we've hit a thousand subscribers. We've surpassed the, your YouTube channel surpassed, surpassed our cable channels. Now that we're over one thousand, the cable's now under a thousand, which I said is about nine hundred, which probably I'll see it drop in April. Um, and uh, and, and we're set to shut down in FY twenty eight. That, that's, we, uh, going in FY twenty seven, I'm estimating a deficit of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, and our current reserve is at forty five thousand dollars, as um, Linda mentioned uh, before Thanksgiving. Um, and we have two unplanned mandates to come. Uh, these two unplanned mandates um, are one and at, and, and in a, if by twenty twenty seven, we have to have some sort of ADA compliance um, for closed captioning on our channels, which is really, really expensive. Um, and other means of access as well, I believe their part is internal um, and did facility as well. Um, and then there's a bill in legislature H forty two ninety nine um, that will mandate every single boarding committee to be hybrid. So we couldn't choose hybrid, virtual, in person. It has to be hybrid. Um, and that would, that would mean a little bit more work and capital for us. Um, uh, and i- i- if we, if we weren't looking at an override at any, any level, we still would be in this situation. Um, and, and in, yes, we are looking to fiber optic, the best can take a good amount of time to really get that to fruition, seize an actual sustainable level of revenue that we can predict every year. Um, and then this bill, even though it's passing, it's expediting this session, it does not mean it's gonna go to the governor's desk. If we still have one big hurdle, that's the Ways and Means Committee. And then what, once that's passed, that's how our legislature wants to get this bill through the legislature. Um, so these are the things that, you know, we're, we're, we're seeing. And I, I'm gonna be frank, we need, we need help. And I know the town is in a predicament right now. But Hadley Media definitely needs some sort of intervention soon, sooner than later before we're, before we're, we're gone.
And the, the funding that Hadley Media gets from Spectrum, is that, is that a, a set fee or is that based on subscribers?
So if you remember back in, I believe it's twenty twenty three, uh, spring of twenty twenty three, no, sorry, spring of twenty twenty four, um, when we negotiated that license, um, we get five percent every year.
Of?
Of whatever revenue it already gets from um, residents.
So that's a moving target.
It's very much so, even though we, we did see it up, another reason we're seeing more revenue this this fiscal year than last fiscal year is because of the increase in their percentage. Um, um, in the last, this last license, we're gaining four percent. We're gaining five percent now. That's, that's, that's the legal limit um, that we can get federally.
And that's just on the TV?
Just TV. We're still under the uh, keep the Cable Act in nineteen eighty four. So
Nineteen eighty four.
Yeah.
And so the options are that we build Hadley Media into the budget.
Hmm.
Right. Or other, I know in the past, there's been conversation about um, Hadley Media becoming its own nonprofit. And I think you actually lived in that world for a while.
I did. When I worked in Granby, we went out with a nonprofit.
Right. And there, that has its own set of challenges, correct?
I wouldn't go to nonprofit.
Yeah.
Um, mainly one thing, when I, when I ran that, it was a similar size, similar sized town.
Yep.
Um, uh, obviously, we're municipal, we're in the town. So we're not paying, I, I talked to Taka Sue about this, and we'd actually pay more in insurance as a nonprofit entity than we would be as a municipal, cuz we're under this umbrella.
Right.
Um, then we have to pay our own, you know, workers' comp, um, property insurance. If we were, we got to pay rent, if uh, we were not at Goodwin. Um, there, there's, there's a lot to think about as a nonprofit entity.
And the, the population that you're serving is small.
And the startup costs too.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a cost to create a nonprofit, eagle fees.
Hmm.
Um, and then you gotta file every year.
Taxes, all this stuff.
Yeah, and um, when I worked in Granby, we paid a thousand, about a thousand eleven hundred dollars just to um, um, submit taxes or our tax forms. We, nonprofits don't pay taxes, but we still, they still
Stuff to file.
File with the IRS, yeah.
Hmm. Unless there's some magic grant money that comes like manna from heaven and, you know, we could use that.
Does that stuff exist out there, Alex, that you're aware?
Hard to come by.
Yeah.
It really is hard to come by.
Unfortunately, gonna be one of those things where, like everything else that seems to be happening in town, if the people want it, then we gotta figure out a way for them to wanna pay for it.
It, it, this is not easy conversation. I mean, I, I know you don't want more people coming here, they gave me more money. I, I mean, I get it, but we're, we're at like
I think we're all very aware of that, Alex, and it's not news to any of us. Uh, it's not hard to see that your, your reserve fund keeps dwindling.
Hmm.
Uh, so again, if it's something that the townspeople want, then we gotta figure out how to get them to be willing to pay for it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, it's become, I would say has become primary communication mechanism for the business of the town.
Yeah.
More so than the local newspaper, more so than
Yeah.
the, the cable.
I think last time our weekly actually did something in town was about a year ago. If it were just to be about Hadley and not something they put slept on the Ha- Hadley subpage and made it throughout the whole county. It, it was, yeah, they're facing their challenges too. I mean, newspapers are unfortunately a dying business.
Right. Yeah.
So we feel your pain, Alex, and we'll see what we can do to help alleviate it somewhat.
Yeah, and, and I think Alex isn't saying this, but I mean, you know, I think a concern is that obviously we're looking at existing funded departmental budgets, and we're looking to, you know, where, where can we make cuts? Um, I think Alex is smart to keep coming and poking at us because I'm assuming what you're trying to head off is that we don't get to that budget cycle and then say, well, you weren't in the budget to begin with. Oh, the coffers, so the cupboards are now bare.
Hmm.
Um, and Alex is being, or Hadley Media is being treated differently from everything else that we have to look at, so.
Right. Yeah, a- a- and I do wanna say one thing about putting in the budget. I would just be very cautious because in the Senate bill, unfortunately, the House bill and Senate bill are two different, two different things, for whatever reason, they aren't like that. The Senate bill, um, they, they amended it before it went to Ways and Means to, cuz we have our own special enterprise fund under a, a different MGL. Rather, uh, so instead of it being just like a water sewer, we have our own MGL. Um, and that would amend that MGL to accept that streaming money from this, that, from these bills.
Hmm.
Um, so I'd be, I'd just be very cautious of ch- changing how we do that um, enterprise fund. Um, I, I do suggest a, a general fund subsidy, um, only because of that and how, how that, the new language is in that bill.
Yeah. I'm finding, yeah, mechanically it may be different, but I think the point being
Yeah.
The revenues have to get raised and appropriated, something.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, and if you have any questions, well, any of it's up.
We know where to find you.
If you do.
Thanks again.
Absolutely.
Okay, item six point one, Town Administrators Report and Town Project Updates.
Uh, just a couple of updates for you. The, uh, I spoke with Jane. I don't know if she wants to give a quick update, but um, the landfill solar project, um, the committee that we have overseeing that project um, may have a, a update in the near future. There's, there's some interest from some outside uh, folks perhaps that may wanna push that project forward. Jane, I didn't know if you wanted to tack on to that. Is it? So is she allowed to add on to that since it's technically on my, or she's not?
I can do it when it comes under committee liaisons.
Okay, perfect. So Jane will give you a quick update uh, on that one. Um, Levy Rehab, we are still in the same um, spot on that. We are waiting on two different items from our outside partners on, uh, on that issue before we can move that forward. Library Roof, the final report from Gail is complete. Town Council has reviewed. Um, and we have had one brief discussion with them about it. We will be bringing it um, forward for select board discussion in the near future. Um, let's see. I think I actually attached the wrong report, but I have most of it memorized, so it's not a big deal. Um, strategic planning, nothing has changed there. FD impact bargaining is obviously complete. We did that today. Uh, the only other new item is uh, my miscellaneous there. We did have a failed culvert on Moody Bridge Road that we unfortunately discovered while everyone was plowing uh, the snow. They have shored it up to keep the, keep it from collapsing fully. We do have about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in transportation money, which we can use to fix it. I spoke with Linda about this just to see if uh, she thought that perhaps the select board may need to vote to release those funds. She did some research on and discovered that that is not the case, so we should be okay. And uh, suggested that just notifying you folks that we do have that money, we will be using it to repair, uh, make the repair to that culvert. It will likely take up all that money, so that transportation money will be gone after they're done, but we'll have a new culvert. Uh, that is it for now.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, liaison reports. Anybody have anything?
Tonight?
Jane?
Here I am, here I am. Um, so it was obvious to the committee, looking at the landfill solar, that the town was not interested in advancing any more money towards this project to own it. At the same time, uh, we heard from an outside source who wondered if we might be interested in having an outside developer do things for us that would pay the town money and give us a reduced electric rate. And we said, give us more information, and that's what we're waiting for.
Okay, that sounds interesting.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements.
Uh, Park and Rec Lunch with Santa and the Fire Department Santa Tour, December thirteenth, time and location on town website. And Holiday Art Sale at the Senior Center, December eighth, ten to two.
What about the content? Yeah, are you gonna do that?
Uh, I don't know. Are you gonna do this, Mike? Are you, uh?
Mike doesn't know about it. I mean, he knows about it, but I put it in there for y'all, for y'all to see it and maybe make a decision to make an announcement about it.
Okay, well, I'm looking at it, and it makes sense to me. So um, we got Mr. Scott McCarthy is a Rhodes Scholar. R O A D S. And we have a letter addressed to the town administrator, and I will read it. Dear Michael Mason, it is with great pleasure that the Bay State Roads Program recognizes Scott McCarthy for becoming a Rhodes Scholar. Scott's level of achievement required completing a minimum of thirty five contact hours of eligible Bay State Roads workshops. Scott has demonstrated continued interest in improving operations at the town of Hadley by participating in these intensive training workshops. Each workshop is taught by transportation experts in specific fields to provide the best instruction opportunities. Achieving the Rhodes Scholar level also lends itself very well to articles in local newspapers or agency notifications. Recognition and appreciation can also be given at municipal meetings, bringing your town and Scott's commitment to local attention. Thank you for providing your team with training opportunities and supporting their professional development. Congratulations again on the success of Scott McCarthy.
Spectacular.
Yes, that is excellent. Congratulations, Scott McCarthy. And then now I gotta figure out where I'm at.
Then there's a second one. From the Amherst Town Council?
Yep. I'm getting there. Okay. Uh, all right, so we have a letter from the town of Amherst, direct addressed to the Hadley Select Board. Dear Members of the Board, on behalf of the residents of the town of Amherst, we want to express our deepest gratitude for the immediate response and exceptional assistance during the catastrophic fire at the Olympia Drive Apartments in Amherst on November seventh. Please extend our thanks to your employees who responded to our call for mutual aid. The Amherst Town Council passed the attached citation expressing our appreciation. The massive fire was reported at eight twenty P M that Friday night and burned one building under construction and an adjoining occupied apartment building throughout the weekend. In the end, we had to demolish the occupied apartment building, displacing two hundred and thirty six residents, almost all students at the University of Massachusetts Amherst. We are proud to report that no human lives were lost, and incredibly, there were no reported injuries to residents or first responders. Your efforts in this coordinated response undoubtedly prevented a far worse outcome. The scale and intensity of this incident presented challenges that no single community in the region could have managed alone. It was a true testament to the strength of regional cooperation. Hadley's ladder truck, firefighters, and especially the leadership of Chief Spankable proved decisive in fighting the fire. Over thirty two communities responded with Over thirty two communities responded with forty vehicles from Hampshire, Franklin, Hampton, Berkshire and Worcester Counties. The dedication, skill and preparedness of your emergency responders were crucial to fighting the the conflagr- conflagration. We recommend, we commend the calm demeanor, expertise and selflessness displayed by all the personnel on the scene. The entire town of Amherst is humbled by the kindness and unwavering kindness and unwavering commitment to serving and protecting our communities that was demonstrated by your team. The actions of your first responders exemplify the very best of public service and the spirit of mutual aid. As always, we stand ready to assist you in your time of need. During this time of Thanksgiving, our community is forever grateful for the sacrifices and the dedication shown by your first responders and ask that you convey our enduring appreciation to each of them. That's a very nice letter. Thank you, Town of Amherst. Thank you, Hadley Fire Department and anybody else who was over there. From this.
Can we send the Rhodes Scholar letter to uh Scott Merzbach and say, we've got this great news about the town?
I'm happy to do that.
Do you think Mister McCarthy will appreciate it?
You should probably ask Scott first.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's ask Scott if that's okay. And if he's okay with it, we can do that. Okay, uh, any other announcements?
Just have condolences tonight to a number of individuals. Um, so uh, on behalf of the select board, like to express condolences to the families and loved ones of the following individuals um who resided in Hadley who've passed over the past a couple of weeks, um, Judith Leparad, Fred Pierog, Irene Ferris, Joan Smola. Um, and of course, um, Weskevitz, former select board member.
I have one other announcement. Jane Booth, who was the first Council on Aging Director, passed this fall and there will be a celebration in honor of her life this Saturday at the Senior Center from eleven to two. Anyone who knew her is welcome to join.
Okay, and I would like to say one final thing that is about uh Jennifer and her uh, putting together the Citizens Academy. Uh, I am a participant in said academy and it's very interesting. Learn things that you don't necessarily know, especially somebody who is not in a position like I am. Uh, and it's been enjoyable so far. We've done a lot of different things and I highly recommend that anybody who has any kind of interest in how this town is run to get involved in a future Citizens Academy.
And we are, we are going to have a all members of the public welcome finance night because it was so well received during Citizens Academy. Just thought the timing is right. People want to learn about the finances and how things work and can ask a bajillion questions. We're gonna open it up and just probably take this room and hopefully fill it up and Linda can teach them about anything they want to know about finances.
Can we do some direct outreach?
Oh, we're gonna.
Oh, we're gonna, yeah.
Yes. Yes, lots, lots of outreach and um, I've already got Susan and Cheryl. About it. And I'm gonna ask a select board member to and um I I think it could be really an interesting night. We'll, we'll tackle those terms, free cash and all of that. And hopefully, um, thinking uh, January. I see David is super excited.
Imagine the excitement of one of your children when they got the best Christmas gift ever and multiply that by about a thousand and that's the excitement Jennifer has for this thing.
Yep. You know what? I mean, if you'll give it a chance, municipal government is really amazing and there's so many things you don't realize. So, yeah, it's kind of my, kind of my thing.
Much into my turn.
Motion by Amy, second by David. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call Phil.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Nettie Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yeah.